Good evening, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to the March 18th, 2025 Johnston County Planning Board Meeting. As you can see, we've got a few members absent, and I'm a fill-in for our chairman, so be patient with me tonight, but I appreciate everybody being here. Before we get started, would Mr. Sasser, will you say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Everybody stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the approval of the minutes, do have a couple announcements. If anybody's here for Farm Field, it has been postponed until next month, which will be 4/15, due to an updated map needing to be reviewed by TRC. New notices will be mailed out to adjacent property owners, so I didn't want to waste anybody's time. If you're here for Farm Field, it'll be next month. The second announcement is, before we get to the approval of the minutes, there was an error in the minutes from last month. It's in the packet. At top page four in the minutes, Wade Laster Track was inadvertently identified as Turlington Track Phase Two. It has been corrected. So with that, I would make a table. Anybody give a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Howard, second by Mr. Sasser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved by all. Before we get started with subdivisions, just wanted to read our, you know, the thing we usually talk about. Just, everybody know that the vast majority of land in Johnston County is owned agricultural or residential, which means by right, you can farm it or build houses on it. As such, it is not in purview of this board to determine if a subdivision is appropriate for a specific area, only if the subdivision meets our codes and ordinances. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, we ask that any testimony given directly relevant to how the subdivision does or does not meet the codes and ordinances of the county, as we are the final approval body for subdivisions that wish to give testimony related to a subdivision will need to be sworn in, and we ask that all speakers provide their name and addresses for the record. So if you wish to give testimony, please stand and raise your right hand at this time. How's that go?
Do you swear that...
Swear that the testimony you're going to give today is accurate, as to your knowledge.
I do.
Y'all tell us, my first time.
[laughing]
Okay, we'll get started with subdivisions. The first one is Beulah-Moore subdivision.
Yes, sir. Beulah-Moore owner is Ronnie Boyett. Developers Little River Joko LLC. Surveyor Engineer is BRL Engineering and Surveying. It's on Old Beulah Road and Moore Road in the Beulah Township served by the Shoe Hill Fire District North Johnston Rescue Squad. It's 10.03 acres, 11 lots proposed, Johnston County Public Water Individual Septic. Traffic count for Old Beulah Road, the last recorded was in 2023, and that was 1,100 vehicles per day. Moore Road, there is no traffic count available. This portion of Old Beulah Road and Moore Road do not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. Reverse frontage buffer will be required for all lots backing up to Moore Road. And also, from the Johnston County Land Design Manual, developments creating four more lots where no easement exists and where the parent tracks have direct road frontage and easement shall not be allowed for lots. The development must dedicate a right-of-way meeting the requirements of the section. A waiver may be allowed if determined by the planning board that in pursuit of this section, a hardship is created upon the property that provides no benefit to the safety, welfare, and quality of life to the public.
Thank you, sir. Anybody, any questions, staff? So Todd, I got one question. That lot 11, is it served, okay, I said 30 for the easement. Okay, got you, thank you. Is the owner or the engineer here like to get together?
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Leonard. I'm with BRL Engineering and Surveying. I represent the applicant here today. We're located at 112 East Johnston Street, right here in Smithfield. As staff said, we have a relatively small 10.03 acre tract. It's all high and open land. It's not in a floodplain. It's not in wetlands. There's no stream buffer features. We do propose 11 lots with an internal, single internal cul-de-sac street. We feel the site is relatively straightforward, and even that it meets all of the standards except for the obvious technicality that staff pointed out, that we do have an easement to a flag lot. And we certainly understand staff's position on this, but we also feel that there are some site-specific circumstances that are relating to this issue. I'll just point out that the ordinance states, and I quote, "Flag lots and easement access lots shall be permitted only if it can be demonstrated that subdivision cannot be physically designed otherwise designed, and that no reasonable alternative exists." So it can be allowed, and the ordinance goes on to explain some of the reasons for allowing an alternative to the standard. Some of those reasons are irregular shaped land, constraints due to natural features, and a long narrow parent tract are the top three, and then I think there's a couple others that don't really pertain to this site. So it's these, two of these top three that I kind of want to try and paint a picture and draw your attention to. I think staff already has the layout up here. We also turned in a second sheet, a sheet two, and I don't, we don't, yeah, I think it's in your packets, but I don't think we have it on over here, right? And I've talked with staff about giving you guys a handout of that same sheet, except I've got a highlighter on it. So if I may.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So again, this is the same second sheet that we submitted, just with what we call the good soils and the bad soils line. So when you look at the overhead, it doesn't look like it's necessarily a narrow tract, but when you look at the soils, you see that it's the middle area that's the good soils, and it's the outer edges that are not the good soils. So what we do indeed have here is a narrow tract of usable land, and that's why we've laid the subdivision street out almost in the middle of the good land. So it is a narrow tract, and also, we feel like it is indeed, has an irregular shape to it, and it's, of course, that lot 11, we feel like that it just kind of sticks out there almost as its own individual lot. But we just can't quite get back there with the road to do it. So we are indeed trying to maximize our layout, and those are some of the physical constraints that we feel like we have on this site. I'll also say that as far as process goes, you know, these lots are typically allowed as a minor subdivision, and this lot, Lot 11, as you see it, in theory, it could be cut out without having to come to the board as its own individual lot, as a minor subdivision. You know, that could occur tomorrow with the right surveyor cutting Lot 11 out and having access directly to Moore Road. So, you know, it could be done like that, and we could still lay out our lot as a 10 subdivision. It would be 11 lots, but we felt like it was a safer situation overall to have access internal to the subdivision. And you'll see on this sheet number two that we've even sketched in a single driveway that would be a shared driveway at the end of that cul-de-sac. So Lot 6 and Lot 11 would share that driveway.
Just entrance.
Yes, that's correct, right off the cul-de-sac. So we feel like it's a better overall layout to include that back Lot 11 and have that internal access to the subdivision, instead of it being its own lot outside the subdivision and having a separate access. So, you know, that's our case, and I'm not going to say too much more about it, but we're certainly trying to lay it out according to actually what the standard allows in certain circumstances. And of course, other than that, we definitely feel like this is simple as far as subdivisions go, and it meets all the other standards. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Who maintains the easement?
It will be the right of the owners, of future owners of Lot 11, for them to use it for their access. So that will be their driveway. It will be on the property of Lot 6. So it's just, it's their right to use it for their own access, so therefore, they would have to maintain it, just like any other private driveway.
The wording at number 10 says good and poor. I think those need to be reversed. Is that...
You're exactly right. I did notice that. That is a typo, and further down, it's correct.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, they are backwards on that Lot 10.
Any other questions?
This may not be relevant, but what about, looks like Moore Road may be really wet close to the highway. I mean, how are you going to address that in somebody's backyard?
Well...
It tends to hold water there.
It does tend to hold water, and there's a DOT pipe that crosses under Moore Road right there. So I don't know if it's a soils issue, or if that pipe is possibly clogged up or not having efficient drainage. I don't know what the downstream problem is, but that will be where we have to take our drainage, because that's the lowest spot on the site. And we'll have to get approval through driveway permit process, through NC DOT. They will require us to do an analysis on that pipe that crosses the road, and if it has capacity to accept the drainage that we're adding, then it could be cleaned out, if that's the problem. But it would stay if it has the current capacity, but if it's under capacity, we may have to upsize.
That'd actually be reviewed by our hydraulics unit in Raleigh through the driveway permit Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the subdivision at this time? Anyone in opposition? Yes, ma'am. Just need your name and address, please.
I'm Brianna Bernou, and I live at 96 Moore Road, which backs up to Lot 11 and to the side of Lot 6. Not in favor, mainly our drainage issue, as he spoke about. Our lot already doesn't drain properly due to that culvert. It's either not flowing correctly or under capacity, I'm assuming, but we have a lot of drainage issues already in the front of our house. In the front, when you're looking at our property, the front, right side of our yard stays wet, and we've addressed it with our own drainage situation. We've tried to do French drains. It doesn't help. I took a video on the way here of the standing water currently from our property down to the end of Old, where Old Beulah meets, and there's water probably 20, 30 feet, maybe more, back into what would be 7, 8, 9, and 10.
The backside's problem?
It would be essentially the backside, so just basically, like, right along the ditch line, there's no grading, it seems like. It grades the wrong way, maybe, but it just doesn't flow. The culvert is just, yeah, right about there, and it just stays wet. And to my knowledge, I could be wrong, but I thought that part of what would be 6 is deemed wetlands. I might be incorrect, but that's just what was told to me by people that have lived there their whole life. So I don't know what essentially that would mean for us, but I didn't realize that, I guess, this would be happening to, I don't know, study up a little bit more, but yeah, I'm just really concerned mainly, like you said, the good soil and bad soil. There is a lot of bad soil. It's very sandy, and a lot of it does run off in our direction. So is there anything else you can add? No, okay. That's just our main concern.
Thank you, ma'am. Bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendation was denied due to Lot 11 being served by an easement not dedicated right-of-way meeting standards.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were there others who want to speak in opposition? I'm sorry. Thank you. I got excited. Give your name and address, please.
Andy Allen, 5949 Old Beulah Road. It's real wet. There's cattails growing in the ditch, but in that field, there's pipe running out all the way around it, never quit running water. So if you're going to put septic tanks there, will that come out? I mean, I've got pictures of it, but they run all year, no matter how dry it gets. And that's our concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Ricky Allen. I live at 5959 Old Beulah Road, and I agree with Mr. Andy, the water is standing in that ditch year-round. No matter how hot and dry it gets on our property, it's always in those ditches. And when we get a heavy rain, it really floods the road, which runs down to the Little River. And so we have concerns with that issue, and look like to me, Lot 11 is in front of a house. There's a house always at the end of that property owned by Ms. Price, but I don't see it in the architectural drawing. She's not here. Her husband died last year, and she does have a drive to her house where he's talking about putting in another easeway to be shared. I'm just concerned about her and her house.
Where she at?
I don't see that on this map.
This is Old Beulah Road. She got a driveway right across from us. We was thinking that was her house.
You see the driveway?
At the end.
Yeah, at the bottom, off of Old Beulah, right there along the property line.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Right here?
No, no, no.
Down, 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 down. Yeah, that's her house, and there's a drive.
White line.
Oh, I see. Right here.
Yep, yep.
Show me again.
Right here, the bottom of the line. That's where that line is, it's right here. It's coming on this property, this property line.
Okay, so you're not...
And it's kind of, no, so it's coming this way and out here.
Okay, so that won't affect her? Okay.
Is that the log cabin?
Yes.
Okay, now, no.
Yes, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Brian, would you like to respond, please?
I think the first concern was regarding possible wetlands. We have had an environmental consultant look at that, and they determined that there were no wetlands out there. So...
Just poor soil.
Just, possibly. I don't know what the overlying problem is.
Yeah.
As an engineer, I would typically be inclined to think it's either that pipe is clogged up and just backs the water up, or it's been doing it for so long, it's just become wet, or the soils themselves are poorly drained. It's usually one of the two. But just to reemphasize, we're always interested in wetlands, because we have to stay away and stay off of wetlands, but we have had it determined that there are no wetlands. And then I think there were concerns about some underdrains. You know, I don't know what's under that ground out there, and we'll have to have Environmental Health go out there and do their evaluations for the septic systems, and of course, that's always a risk of development.
And that's part of the conditions.
That's right. You have to meet all of those standards, so we will indeed do that, and if there are extenuating factors under that ground, then the developer will have to deal with that.
And as far as that pipe, I guess during your evaluation, we'll determine whether that's undersized, or will DOT do that during the driveway permit process? If it's undersized, it'll...
It'll be on the developer to replace the pipe and upsize it.
That's right.
Or clean it out, or whatever.
Correct.
What prevented you from just extending the cul-de-sac down to parcel 11?
Well, because that soil...
Cost prohibitive, or...
Because that soil narrows, is so narrow with the property line at that point.
Could put a septic tank on the six.
We could literally lose, we could have lost lots five and six just to extend the street. So we're, you know, we're obviously trying to maximize layout, which is always our goal, but if there's other extenuating circumstances through the process, then, you know, this could always have to step back a lot or more. But that's just part of the risk of development, I guess you'd say.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Now bring it back to staff. Thank you.
The staff recommendation was denied due to Lot 11 being served by the easement not a dedicated right-of-way meeting standards of the section.
I'll tell you what my concern was at the beginning when I read this, and he's actually cleared up one of my concerns, was why didn't they just deed to Lot 11 going out to Moore Road on the back of Lot 6, 30 feet, and that would clear up that situation? But now that I've seen the aerial view, I think it's this lady's house is right there, the driveways would be so close together, that wouldn't be feasible. I see easements all the time, so the easement does not bother me. It would just be disclosed to a future buyer, and it would be up to the buyer if they want to take on an easement. Because I actually literally did have written down on my map, why can't you deed to Lot 11, 30 feet? So I understand that now by seeing that aerial view. See how close that driveway would be to that next one? Wouldn't be feasible.
And I think it was mentioned, they, you know, it does serve that lot internally to the subdivision, so that's less impact on Moore Road.
And then the stormwater is one of the conditions, or several of the conditions that's already on here.
Yeah, that's my concern, is flooding the back, flooding the road, plus creating all of this downflow down to that pipe that's going to back up and create a hazard. But that has to be resolved before it's approved.
Correct.
And as well as Mr. Allen's comments about the outflow of water, I mean, they're not going to approve that through environmental, if septic tanks are actually draining into this outflow.
Yes, sir.
I'd say I'd appreciate it coming through the board, instead of just trying to permit it tougher. Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Second by Ms. Howard. All those in favor say aye.
If you don't mind, staff would recommend if this is to be approved, we would recommend that there be added condition. So the approval would require a maintenance agreement submitted and reported before we give the final plan when that time comes, before that agreement between serving law order.
The commission to approve with the condition added that the easement that services Lot 11 be written into the conditions as maintained by the owner of Lot 11.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right, let's move on to the Turlington Track Phase Two.
Yes, sir. Owner is Tony and Diane Johnson. Developers Benson Hardy Land LLC. Surveyor Engineers Freedom Firm PC. The location is 3028 Benson Hardy Road in the elevation township served by West Johnston Fire and EBS Rescue Squad. It's 18.38 acres, 21 lots proposed, Johnston County Public Water Individual Septic. Traffic count for this road is not available. This portion of Benson Hardy Road does not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. If you'll remember, Turlington Track, the first phase was approved at the latter part of 2024.
Man, we tabled this one the last time.
We had a table, the engineer was there.
Yes, correct. Just for the record, I know our traffic count has been done on this road recently.
It has.
1259.
1259?
Yes, sir. The engineer, like to approach and discusses.
Good evening, board.
Carlos Bagley.
63 Watkins Road, Clayton, North Carolina, here representing the applicant. This is a quote Phase Two in the previously approved Phase One of Turlington to the South. I have a, an overall of what was approved, and if y'all would like to have a copy, I'm not sure what, just to clarify what was...
And the Hatch section is the previously approved lots.
Thank you.
And we are continuing subdivision to the north.
So just a continuation to the north DOT roads, go for stormwater permit, septic, soils, typical Johnston County Public Water subdivision. And I can answer any questions.
Is this the last phase? Or is there additional?
There's a stub to the south.
Okay, I see it.
That could possibly, but we don't have that land at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, we have the engineer, and this has been brought up by resident. Lots, it looks like the shared lot line 2048, 49 crosses the property boundary and joins and runs through and easement, established easement with Phase One at Lot 33. I believe that lot line crossing through that easement is in there, but we'd like to get it on record that that is the case.
Yeah, we need to stop it at the bowl line. You're right, Russell. Yes, sir, thank you.
And what does the easement go to, the back land?
Yes, ma'am, to Mr., I forgot, Pleasant's land? And that was approved as a part of the phase.
Right.
And we also give him, he's using the existing path, in my understanding, across a pond to the north, but we give him a... We give him a stub to the south to go into a suitable portion of his land so he can have favorable development or sell it or whatever he wishes to have.
Any questions? Anyone here like to speak in favor of the subdivision? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Bring back staff.
Staff recommendations preliminary approval subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
Ask one clarifying question. That bowl line that goes through lots 34 and 54, is that just to outline what's previously approved, or the limits of the easement? Or has, does that at all impact the property lines for 34 and 54?
So it's the previous lot line, and what will occur when you have, when you have these, you have two parcels, right? It's going to make up this, these two phases of development. That lot line will actually go way through a method of recombination as through this parcel. So they'll show an abandonment of that lot line.
Got you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Sasser, I mean, Mr. Lovering, taken by Mr. Sasser. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the Todd Track.
Yes, sir. Todd Track, owner is ET Farms LLC. Developers Cloudbreak Investments LLC. Surveyor engineer is the Becker Morgan Group, Inc. The location is 626 Dodd McLam Road in the Ingram's Township served by Blackman's Crossroads Fire and Four Oaks Rescue. It's 99.8 acres, 51 lots proposed. Johnston County Public Water Individual Septic Traffic Count was not available. The, this portion of Dodd McLam Road does not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. This parcel is not within the environmentally sensitive area. However, a floodplain appears on the parcel.
Any questions? Engineer like to approach, please.
Good evening. I'm Donnie Adams with Becker Morgan Group, 314 East Main Street in Clayton, and our firm is handling the planning and engineering on this project. By the way, for the record, you look like a seasoned veteran up there.
Yeah.
So just a couple of things I wanted to say about the project, and we understand that this is the first, as you guys know, this is the first step in the process. Should we get approval here tonight for our preliminary subdivision, then we've got work to do with our construction drawings, NC DOT, Johnston County Utilities, both for road control, stormwater, eventually working through with environmental help for the septic permitting on these lots. So now we're talking about the preliminary subdivision approval. So with that being said, what's in front of you, our plan meets the current Johnston County standards. We are proposing 51 lots on roughly 100 acres, so about half a lot per acre is our density, proposed density. We do have, we are proposing access for all the lots, frontage along a proposed street with the public right-of-way. If you're looking at the plan, it may look a little different than what I'm saying, but on the right-hand side, on the east side, there are, there are some, they look like lots, they are offsites. There will be providing septic for the lots that are along the roadway.
Are they the, are they...
Yes, yeah, they should have an OS behind them. They'll give the lot number that it's attached to, and it'll be like OS for offsite.
Those are all repair.
And I assume that double little line is their easement to get to their site? And they needed to access it?
That's right, yeah. So there'll be, because of the number of those, it'll be, excuse me, an all-weather path that's through their all-weather access. So that's how they'll be accessed.
Well, an HOA maintain the pond and the access?
So yes, there is going to be an HOA on this. I think the final decision on whether, whether it's HOA, or whether it's retained by the underlying landowner, it'll be, it'll be taken care of. It won't fall back to an individual property owner within the subdivision.
Community managed.
Yes. Yep, and we do have, we are showing our cluster box unit near the front, actually in front of that pond area, the open space area. We have appropriate site distance out for our DOT driveway permit. We don't anticipate any, any problems should this move forward. But with that being said, I'd be happy to answer additional questions you guys may have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here like to speak in for the proposed subdivision? Anyone like to speak against? Yes, sir, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
My name is John Dodd. I live at 538 Dodd McLam Road, adjacent to this property. I've got a written statement here if I'm trying to fire you.
Yes, sir.
If I get a little out of sequence, just let me know.
Go ahead.
I've lived here my entire 52 years. I have three houses on my track land with my mother, living in the Dodd home place, and my mother-in-law living next to us. I'm fifth generation Dodd on this farm, and my son is six, so needless to say, I have Duke roots here. To explain a little bit myself, in my early years, I was destined to be a farmer in my father's footsteps. He passed away young and after college. I couldn't continue farming, so I got in civil construction. And I'm an area manager with a civil, a heavy civil construction firm. I bring that to your attention because I've got some concerns about the proposed subdivision. I had some questions about the septic lots, but I think y'all will answer that. But I just want to bring up, when the county water line was installed about 20 years ago, there was only a four-inch water line ran down Dodd McLam. I know because I was requesting a fire hydrant in my yard, and they couldn't do it because it closed. So with this, my concern is with this proposed subdivision, they would have to upsize the entire water main down Dodd McLam Road. And if so, that would mean that the, our shoulders and driveways would be, need to be torn up again. So I just want to bring up that concern. And then this, our road is a secondary road. It's only about inch and a half asphalt on a sand clay base. The DOT usually does just a chip and seal repair every few years, but just really concerned with the heavy traffic, with the construction, and then the adding traffic to this, what it could do. And then I had concerns because the current plan drawn doesn't show any kind of turning lanes or bus stops or anything. I don't know what all requirements are for that, but just worried about the traffic. And then it's, it's hard to tell them to draw, and I don't know what the standards are for subdivisions, but I don't see any curb and gutter sidewalks. I just didn't know the level this subdivision will be. And then my concern is, according, according to my Johnston County tax reevaluation just January, my house sitting on 2.5 acres, sitting adjacent, has a $916,000 value. I'm just wondering what this subdivision will bring for, as far as value of my property. In closing, I just want to say a few remarks about the community we live. I realize the growth in the county may be inedible our way, but for now, we're still in the country. There are no subdivisions within three miles of this property. For me personally, spending time on my farm is a release of the hectic schedule we have during the week. There is nothing like the open country feel to relieve stress and wind down. I'm not here to defy anyone from doing what they want to do on their own land, just trying to understand why we need such a development. Currently on Dodd McLam Road, there are 10 homes, including three on my property. If the county approves this 51-home subdivision, it will increase the number of homes by more than 500% at once a week. The country life is what we cherish, will be tarnished what this subdivision will bring. I just ask a question to the board, is this subdivision really needed? Have you filled up all the possible land west of Four Oaks and need to jump this far ahead into the rural country? It's not going to, if it's not going to stop, it's going to take the whole, the whole rest of the county up with houses. Please consider keeping this in the Johnston County rural. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Steve Woodall. I'm at 504 Longview Street in Garner. And across this subdivision, I've got about 40 plus 50 acres in there that was my granddaddy's land. I don't never intend to see it divided up. I want to maintain, like John said, country living. In fact, if I'm as old as I am, I'd be building me a house out there and get out of Garner as busy as it is. But it really bothers me to know then to see this property being developed. It goes back a million since I was born. I love to see the deer out there. And another thing, you put all these houses out there, people that are living in them houses is one thing. You just got a pure park out there that they can go run in, play in, hunt in. I've got a pond on it, they can go fish in it, do what they want to. You put a no trespassing sign up, and that ain't worth a flip. The only thing, you take them to court, and you spend all the time in court with them, they're going to slap them on the hands and say, "Don't do it again." I could put a 12-foot fence up, and they'd still go through. Ladies and gentlemen, I need your help. It don't need to be developed, and like John said, the water line out there, the asphalt that's on that road, we don't need that subdivision out there. I meant, like I said, I'm in Garner, and it's house to house everywhere you go. If you get ready to go to the grocery store, you got to drive 30 minutes to get nowhere. Ladies and gentlemen, please take this consideration, and let's don't develop this and see it go. I'd just hate to see it in my lifetime. Thank y'all for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm James Matts Gill, and I own land at 759 Dodd McLam Road. My family owns about 60 acres, and I agree with John Dodd's comments. He said it better than I can. The infrastructure that's currently there now, the road, the sewer is not set up for this many houses at once, in my opinion. I know this is, like the engineer said, this is just the beginning of the approval process, but one thing that stands out to me, this is not on any county development as far as traffic. So that means it's a rural county road that not a lot happens on. And if you put 50, 60 houses on it, along with the water lines, it's too small. I don't think anybody's going to be happy with this development, including the people who are living there. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Would like to respond back, Donnie, to some of these concerns? Particularly the county water?
County water?
Yeah. With the four-inch line.
Absolutely. So we are aware that there's a four-inch line there. We were, prior to making this a middle, we were in communication with Johnston County Public Utilities. They've acknowledged that, and so we'll be working, working with them moving forward should it get approved tonight to determine what that means, whether it's pulling the six-inch line, or what the case may be. So we'll be working with them and doing that. It's not a surprise, I understand it.
And that's one of the conditions, correct?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
You want to address the lack of curb and gutter and sidewalks?
Absolutely. So in the, in the county as a whole, there's basically our subdivision requirements default back to NC DOT standards, so rural road standards, which would be strip asphalt 20-foot wide with generally a six-foot shoulder, and then grass swells along the side. No curb and gutter, no sidewalk is required. Usually you see those, if that's going to happen, usually you see that in a, in a high-density development where we have sewer where lots get significantly small.
What about the condition of the road, the thickness of the asphalt that was brought up?
Yeah, so as far as...
Was that evaluated?
So personally, or our firm, we have not, nor the developer that I know of, have not evaluated that. Our trust is in NC DOT. It's an NC DOT maintained road.
Right.
Appears to be in good standing, so...
And I will add, because I know there's a question by a gentleman, he was talking about the turn lanes, and when that goes through the driveway permit process with DOT, then it'll be determined on that time, it's determined on the amount of traffic that's on the road. They actually do a count, a physical count on the road while school is in, and just by general statute, if it meets a certain threshold, then it has to have a turn lane. And if not, then the turn lane is required.
Exactly.
And that's a condition?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, the trip generation or generated traffic with this development is approximately just north of 500, 500 yards.
Yeah. And that's a good point, because I know the department, they do the count, then they add trips from the subdivision itself to that count, so it is included. So you're not, you know, just ignoring the subdivision as it is. Any other questions? Bring back staff.
Staff recommendations preliminary approval subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
Is there a way to add a condition that the pond and community access to the offsite septic be maintained by the community instead of an individual lot owner?
Yes, sir, absolutely. No problem with that. I guess I probably want to clear, so there's no intention for it to pass to one of the individual property owners. There is a possibility that the under, the current owner may maintain, not the, not the access for the septic, that'll be part of the HOA, but the pond and remaining open space area may default back to him as open space basic.
Got you.
But yeah.
So based on that, is there anything we need to add to our conditional approval?
Okay. Motion to approve. Have a motion to approve by Mr. Krenstall?
Second.
Taken by Mr. Sasser. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Still approved. Now we're going to go to the special use case, case 18-13 modification. Just remember, this is just for public comment only. The county commissioners will do the approval or the denial on, in their May 5 meeting. So if you're here for that, please be at the May 5 meeting of the county commissioners. With that, Todd, if you'd like to...
Sure. This is a petition to modify an existing special use at 3.6 acres located at 3919 Raleigh Road in Cleveland Township, Zone Community Business Special Use District to add private tattoo studio to previously allowed uses. Owner and applicant's Amanda McNulty requested amendments to add the following allowable uses, private tattoo studio to the existing special use permit served by Macklemore Fire and CNS Rescue. Existing land use is on Community Business Special Use District and is used as a community arts center and a single-family dwelling. Its current surrounding land use is on agricultural residential and used for those purposes. Traffic count for this portion of Raleigh Road is 9,100 vehicles per day, and that was in 2023. This property is located within a designated low-density residential place type on the county's envisioned Johnston Comprehensive Land use plan. There were 11 notices sent to adjacent property owners. The original special use permit was approved in 2018 and has been in compliance with no violations or complaints noted since that time. I do have a copy of the original that has all of the special use conditions. It's basically, I'll put it up on the, I'll have it priced and put it on the screen, but it's basically adding to these special use conditions to allow for a private tattoo studio.
They still apply?
These still apply. Everything else would remain the same. It would just add to number one of permitted use.
And the 6:00 AM to midnight is current? What, we're going to change?
That is what was approved. That is what was approved, yes.
Thank you. Anyone here like to comment on this modification? Please give us your name and address, please.
Sure. I'm Amanda McNulty. You want me to give you the business address?
That'll be fine.
Okay. 3919 Raleigh Road, Clayton, 27520. So I'm the applicant and the owner of the business. Just want to add in having tattoo artists be able to use the building for a private studio. So no open to the public, no walk-in appointments. It would be private, one person at a time, one caller at a time during those hours. We're pretty low-key, nothing, nothing extra.
No flashing tattoo lines?
No signage, advertising. The artists that are coming in are already established. So they already work in a large, I guess, parlor and they want a private place. And so I wanted to add them to what we already do, which is, you know, all about art there. And they're also studio artists. So they're going to, you know, display their art in our gallery and be a part of our, like, art community. They already have a show booked for a reception and stuff in the fall. So they're already kind of part of what we do. We're just having them so they can do their private sessions. We had Ashley come up from the health department and advise whether that would work or not. And she tested the water. Everything went good with that. And she, you know, there's very little modifications, but we can take care of the ones she recommended. The environmental modified the permit already, so the septic permit is all updated and everything. So just waiting to see if it's okay if we add them.
Any questions for that? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Bring back staff.
She'll just need to be present at the May.
May 5th.
5th meeting.
County attorney's meeting.
County attorney did not have the, have any of the orders. So next meeting scheduled for the 15th of April.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Howard, second by Mr. Sasser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved.